All right, my father, we bow of pardon at the beginning of this council meeting. We give thee thanks for the opportunity we have to deliberate upon items and concerns that affect this community and the surrounding area. We're grateful for the chance we have to assemble and for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great nation. We ask a blessing upon us that we'll be able to do things that would be helpful and progressive in helping to move things forward in this community and to help it prosper and grow in the area that surrounds us as well. Let me ask for a blessing to be with us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. We will now call the meeting to order. This is 12th day of February 2019. We are pleased to recognize our media, Tammy and Nate McCarthy for Channel 32 and Gunnar Giv for Temple Star. We also like to recognize Lauren Card, our Development Officer, and Brad Larson, our Peace Officer, and also in the gallery, our MP Glenn Motts. And thank you so much for taking the time to visit us. It's an honor. We will ask to have an addition to our agenda. MP Motts would like to talk to us about different items that we had debriefed him on, and he is set to report on the findings. So we need a motion and we need to have 100% approval.
Motion to accept the addition.
As a delegation?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. So, Mr. Motts, if you'd like to come?
Mayor, you still need to...
Oh, yes. You need to approve the agenda, please. The agenda, that's right. You're absolutely correct. Go ahead, Councilor Brown.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, the 12th day of February 2019.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. So, MP Motts, if you'd like to take the podium, we'll be glad to hear you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I had my staff make you aware that I was coming and I was trying to graph the later part of their meeting tonight as well. I just, I think one thing advantage of this opportunity to, just to let you know of a couple of things that are on the go. My office has sent you a survey to all the councils in the writing, and it was, it's a Survey Monkey survey that, as a council together, as a group, we'd asked that you would complete that. And what it is, what we're doing is, it's a pre-budget. We expect the federal budget to come down probably that third week of March, potentially, maybe into April, we're not sure for sure. But what we're trying to do is get a sense from all of our communities. We've put together three surveys. One to all the councils in the writing, one to all the Chamber of Commerce in the writing, and then they have a choice whether they'll complete it as a chamber on behalf of their businesses, or whether they will put it out to their businesses and if the businesses submit themselves to us. And then we've done it through social media to those who we follow, and we've boosted it a number of times. So that, you know, and it's similar questions, but it's more about the economic conditions and what the budget, what people would want to see in a budget, what they need from a council's perspective, from your perspective, is what projects do you have on the go that are in the hopper now for funding? What projects would you consider? Should you have funding available for you? What projects are you considering, but you're waiting for federal funding? Those sort of things. And there's a number of other things in there as well that have some impact. Well, we want to, we want to use that as a vehicle to then report pre-budget. This is what we've heard from our community. This is what our writing is telling us, that councils, businesses, individuals are hoping to see in the federal budget. Once that budget is out then, then we'll do a comparison. This is what we were told, this is what people were expecting, and here's what was delivered. And, you know, we want to, we want to report on that. Plus, the other thing we want to do, as I indicated, I'm very optimistic for a change in government in the fall of 2019, very optimistic. And this, this will, this will help develop some of the things that my writing needs from a municipal perspective. And so that'll be the tool we use there. So if you haven't completed it yet, I believe, we're hoping that we can get them in in the next couple of weeks. And I'm sorry, if I may, Madam Mayor, Jeff, you should have, it was sent to you?
Yeah, I don't recall it. I'm doing a search as we speak here.
Okay, it was, it was from my A1 or C1 council, C1A council, whatever it was from.
If I don't have it all certain, make sure tomorrow.
Yeah, call my office and we'll get that up to you. So, I know Bo Allen had it and they were, they were, they had, I think, completed or were in the process of completing it. The second thing I wanted to, to make you aware of is I will be going around, you know, I'm going to come out to Cartston County to also see them and after I get back from a couple of weeks in Ottawa, starting next week again. And what we're trying to do is provide opportunities to connect with people, so I'll, you know, meet in the library, and we'll be advertising that. I don't know the dates yet. Colleen from my office is working on that as we speak. And we'll be, you know, getting different communications out to different communities of when I'm going to be back. And we haven't set the dates on those yet, but that's something that will be happening and will be letting the public know. And just, it's more of a meet and greet and visit and see what's going on. The other thing that I want you to be aware of is there was a proposal that was presented by Councilor Self and Jeff, I believe, and another gentleman. I think the gentleman behind you, I forgot his name. Yes, Jeff. In regards to the Friendship Center. That proposal was presented to Minister Phil Pot when she was Indigenous Affairs. Now that that shift has occurred, last week I sat with the new minister, Seamus Regan. I briefly, I didn't have a copy with me when I spoke with him. I explained what it was, I gave him the names of it, the details of it, and he was going to go back and check on it and check on the status of it. And I said, once he's had a chance to review it, get back to me again, and it's something that I believe, you know, could have some value to this community as well as to our friends, you know, from the blood. I know that there's some, there's some things that have to work through yet with that proposal and understanding, you know, whether, how the province plays in that and the reserve itself. But at least we're hopeful that Indigenous Affairs will at least see the value in this and maybe push from their end, because I'm continuing to advocate for it. I read the proposal, I've heard the impact that it could have on this community, and I think I applaud the efforts of those who put this proposal together. I think there can be some good of it. I mean, anytime you can add value to the lives of others in this way, we've done justice to our communities, and so I'm continuing to push for that. As far as that, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on, as you can imagine. I didn't come here to give you a report on what's happening in Ottawa because it makes my head spin and some of it's aggravating and some of it is entertaining. But I came more to listen to you, and I know this is, this is not the venue for that. Should there be things that we need to have conversations about in closed sessions, about where you're going, where you want to go, how we may be able to work together on making some of those things come about? You know I'm available, Jeff certainly has my contact information, and I'm available to come and meet with you, whenever that is. So this is more of a listening tour, to make myself available to you. I've been here before, and I always appreciate the opportunity that you've afforded me to interrupt your meeting and have the microphone for a few minutes. I won't take any more of your time unless you entertain some questions, Madam Mayor.
I really think because your time is very short, what about if we were to compile some themes or some questions for you, and when you come next time, we will decide our best to do it.
Sure.
So that we're not pressed because of time.
And I apologize. I mean, I have limited, this is my, this is my writing week. I've been in Ottawa for two weeks, I'm going back for two more weeks. I'm trying to get as much done in the writing as I can. I feel that there's always something going on somewhere, and I'm trying to get at these council meetings in an efficient way. But this may not be, this certainly isn't the best venue to have, to just sit down and just pour a cup of coffee or a glass of pop. Sorry, Jeff laughs at me all the time. You know, it's more of a phrase than an analogy in practicality. So, but, you know, just to get to know each other instead, we can, we can work on, you know, we have some similar goals.
Right.
And we can, you know, we can work on this as well.
Well, we appreciate your reporting, as we say regarding the Friendship Center. We also did a little bit more due diligence regarding the parameter that are around that type of initiative at the level of the province, and we understand fully that they have to be initiated from indigenous group or citizens in a community, and we will respect that process. But knowing that there is a potential for funding is a very welcome thought.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
And we'll keep working on, you know, those things, the parameters that have to be met. We'll continue to, you know, to work on those together, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Do you want a coffee to go?
I have, I have one of those, thank you very much.
And we're happy to know you could find a Cartston Tuke.
Well, I mean, I saw it, so your sign works. I pull up over front and I said, "Cartston Tuke, that's not cool." So I came in and she, she said there were 50 bucks, but I don't know what that is. I said the sign says only 10.
For you, it was special.
Next question, you're expecting to that too.
That would be considered a prof and it wouldn't be allowed. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Yeah, I will. Okay, I'll get one.
All right, our next delegation will be our Peace Officer, our Community Peace Officer, will be Peace Officer Lawson. And we need to have Jeff address the topic of animal bylaw, and then you will have the privilege to come and help us. Thank you.
Sorry not to send you backwards.
Do a background on this one.
Okay, so let's just talk about computer things for a minute. You all have a folder that just says 2019, February 12th on your OneDrive right now, so it's not within the 2017 folder, but you should have, and if not, we'll start printing them. Let me know. So no idea what happened there, because I don't have it either, so.
Mind this one.
But you should have the specific folder now, yeah. All I wanted to touch on with the animal bylaw is, at CCW, there was some discussion about particularly the aggressive dog piece of the bylaw. Nothing specific, but I asked Brad just to come and speak to things in general terms. Yeah, just for Gunnar there, thank you. To come to speak to generally the federal legislation, provincial, how we deal with some of those types of things. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I said in your background before that it was simply an amalgamation with no changes, but the schedule has changed. So I do want to point that out. The fine and the fee schedule that you see in here is different from the old dog bylaw simply because, and we talked about this last time, it doesn't have mandatory warnings for first offense.
Right.
So that's the change there. And so those are the...
And we agreed upon that change last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm just looking, the other thing we'll tweak, because on mine, it still has the sections. Seamus, I thought we've removed all the sections from the schedule?
Sections.
Oh, they're just updated.
They're all updated.
Okay, so they're staying and they're just updated. Thanks. We were tweaking some of this today, folks, so. So that's good, that's fine. So that's the one change. It's not a true amalgamation, we changed the fee schedule. So then I asked Brad, and he'll come and speak to some of the things, I know there's a lot in this bylaw, but he'll come speak to the aggressive dog piece, and I'm sure there'll be a few questions. We've only had a couple of files reported on aggressive dogs in the last quite a while. Both are, so one thing I'll preface to, one of them is concluded, one of them is not, so I don't want to discuss the details of the one that's not, simply because it's still probably going to court. So I just don't want to discuss it in this forum. We can have a closed session discussion if you like sometime about where it's at, but I don't want to jeopardize any kind of, anything going to court now. So if you have specific questions, maybe hold on to those for me until we're in a different session.
So we had two in a period of a few years, is that what I meant to understand?
In your time, it'd be done two.
More, more than that.
Well, we just had the two.
Recently.
Oh, okay. In the last year?
Two in the last six months.
Oh, last four months?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking, like, I'll use Anderson's, for example, that's almost a year, well, eight months ago.
Eight months ago.
Yeah, okay. We just had a couple there.
And before that, we know of one for sure, on Fifth.
Yeah.
That was an issue. But beside that, I don't know of any other one.
I have another one recently.
Yeah, which, that's the one that's in process.
Okay.
I know which one you're referring to, and that one, so the fines have been levied, but they have the option to take that.
To appeal them.
To appeal.
Okay. All right. So, that's a good thing to know. It's important for the citizen to really call the town and report those incidents because unless they're reported, we can't do nothing about them. And if we, as councilors, hear about those issues, we really need to ask those people to take the time to call the town. It's, and we will follow up as councilors, we always do. But the citizen who is not informing us has little chance to get better treatment for their problem.
So as prefaced, I've come in here today to kind of bring three things that I feel we can kind of narrow down with relation to, one, investigations as a whole, but more specifically in this case, dangerous dog or dog attack slash bite investigations. That's specific legislation that I would investigate those incidents under, investigative summary, so how I would handle that investigation, and the due process and officer discretion involved around them. The specific legislation, and I don't know, I just recently looked into this, i.e. today or yesterday, but they've taken away a piece of legislation on my appointment. I don't know why the Solicitor General has taken away the legislation on all of our Peace Officer appointments, and that's the Stray Animals Act. We are no longer allowed to enforce that. I don't know why. They won't give us a straight answer. The conference ended yesterday, and so that's why I'm getting that information today. The other piece of legislation that we have provincially is the Dangerous Dogs Act, and then, of course, we have our bylaws. So under the bylaw, that gives us the ability to monetarily put a penalty on a specific incident or a specific act. So in the case of a dog attacking a person, that's the act, we then charge them, there's a voluntary penalty associated to that, or there is a specified, if you go to court, mandatory court appearance, and then, of course, our judicial system can provide that penalty. Under our bylaw, and as it stands as a municipality, I cannot seize a dog and euthanize it. That is not, I'm not allowed to do that. The only way that I can do that is a complaint is made under the Dangerous Dogs Act to the provincial courts or to the justice. The justice then recognizes the complaint, it's then taken before the court, and the justice can make an order to have a dog euthanized. That's the only time that we can euthanize a dog. I've been doing animal control since 2009. I've ordered two, or, sorry, requested two. One chewed apart a nine-year-old little boy and put him in the hospital with 80 something stitches. The other one ripped a backpack off of a seven-year-old little girl on her way home from school. Neither one of those were ordered to be euthanized by the courts. We lost both of those cases, just in that sense. We won the charges, we beat the court case, but both dogs were not ordered to be euthanized. My understanding in doing this for as long as I have and talking to people that do animal control for a living, it's very, very seldom that you're going to get a dog ordered to euthanize. And on top of that, the public perception of that whole situation is really bad. It's, it's not good for us to say, no, we're going to go, whether your dog bites somebody or not, it's not our job to play judge and jury as a law enforcement agency and, or have a dog euthanized. Just doesn't look very good.
Councilor Brown wants to ask you a question.
Yes.
I just have a question. So can you walk me through the process? So, a dog bites me.
That's where I'm going next.
Oh, awesome.
My investigative process.
Okay, perfect.
So, the investigative process is, I receive a complaint. Very, very seldom am I going to see somebody get bit by a dog. So I have to have a complaint. The first thing I do is a preliminary investigation. I want a statement from the victim and a statement from any witnesses. Without that statement, I have no evidence.
Can't do anything.
And my job is to collect evidence to prosecute an occurrence or an incident. So without those preliminary statements, I can't get, the next thing I want to touch on is dog bites. Dog bite is a, there's a certain level of forensic evidence in a dog bite, and we are trained to deal with that forensic evidence, i.e. teeth marks, stuff like that, right? So, in recent cases, there was one where a gentleman fell off a bicycle and broke his knee. That was not as a result of the dog biting a person. That was as a result of a bike hitting a dog and then him falling into the street. So the forensic evidence just wasn't there for a dog bite. The dog, yes, it ran out into the street, that's running at large, and unfortunately under our current bylaw, we don't, I can't issue a charge running at large. I'd have to issue a warning for first offense, so I couldn't issue a charge. The next thing that I would do is, that forensic stuff is photographs, I want photographs of all the injuries that were sustained. And that brings me to the next point, is if you wait three months and you say, hey, I got bit by that dog three months ago, well, show me. If there's nothing to show me, what evidence is there? So then I'm just relying on a statement. So the next thing I would do in a dog bite, where a dog actually bites a person, is I'm going to do a 10-day seizure on the animal, and what that is, is for rabies. So we can do a 10-day mandatory quarantine. That means that the person can take their dog to a vet, that means that the person can have their dog housed in a kennel, quarantined away from other dogs, or they can give it to us and we can house it at the pound. That doesn't mean that I get to physically go there and take their dog, it just means I have to make sure it goes to somewhere where it's quarantined. If the dog is the only dog in the residence, that means I can leave it there. So, it's challenging. If that's happened, then I have to file a report with Alberta Health Services. Then at that point, dog goes back. The next thing is, is everybody, I always like to recognize, there's this side of the story, there's this side of the story, and there's truth somewhere in the middle. I like to try to obtain a statement from the dog owner, or in our case, the subject of complaint, suspect chargeable. If that person's not willing to provide a statement, great, I just issue a charge, and then it's up to the court to decide who's guilty or not. If that person says, yeah, I want to, I want to make a statement, and they provide a statement, and it doesn't match at all what is being told, they were in Calgary and we had a dog with us, here's receipts to show, here's this, now I'm back to square one with no evidence. And unfortunately, there's a lot of black labs that run around this community. Two, and then the last thing is, based on the evidence I've collected, I get the discretion ultimately as to whether or not I want to lay a charge. If I feel that I don't have enough evidence to lay a charge, I would then take it before Jeff, and Jeff can go, yeah, no, I think you should lay a charge. Perfect, I will lay a charge. If Jeff looks at me and says, no, there's not enough here, there's just not enough there, unfortunately. And then, of course, if I lay the charge, there's prosecution, that's what we'll, we talked about that earlier. Currently, we have one that the charge was laid last week, and now we're awaiting the, whatever the court decides, or whatever. If they say I'm guilty, and they go pay their ticket, they're guilty. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was due process and the officer discretion. Officer discretion is a big thing in animal control. We're going to use the running at large for example. Ninety, let's say 95%, and that's just a number I'm coming up with in my head from my use of doing this, 95% of dog bites happen while a dog is running at large, which means it's not in care and control of the person. Right now, and I know this is being dealt with, but right now I can't lay a charge for that, if it's your first offense. If it's your second offense, I can try to lay a charge. Whether or not a court prosecutes on it is another thing. So that's why I've really pushed for this new bylaw. There's a bunch of those offenses that I just, my hands are tied to it. The next thing is, is, we put it in the new bylaw, and you'll see it has an appendix, it's the Dr. Ian Dunbar's Aggression Scale. It's something I've worked on, worked with on all my other previous employments, and it's an exact investigative tool to look at an aggressive dog incident. So I can go, oh, no, this was a level one, or this was a level six where it caused death to a person. Right? So it just gives us that ability to reference something, which currently we don't have. I mean, I could, but whether or not it's accepted again as evidence is another thing. So those are the things I wanted to touch on at this point. Anybody have any questions?
Brad, if you lay a charge, or it goes to the court, and the courts sanction some kind of a charge, and the individual can't pay that charge, what happens?
That's a question for your provincial court system. I have no idea. It could be, they could put it against your driver's license, they could put it, they could make you, what normally I would say would happen is, is you would get 14 days to pay, and at that point, or whatever, whatever the court decides, you have six months to pay. And at that six months, you can't pay the remainder, you get a Form 21 warrant, which means a pay stay warrant, pay or stay warrant, go to jail for the remainder of the time. So in the case of a $2,500 ticket, if you don't, if you can't pay $2,500, it's 25 days incarceration.
Well...
This wasn't 25 days. Yeah. Councilor Brown, do you have a question for?
I did.
We have more questions? Okay, go ahead.
So, just to be clear, a dog comes running at me and is going to bite me, but I boot it to the head because, because it's coming to bite me, I've done this.
It's sub-defense.
They're not going to get fined for having their dog off-leash as of this moment?
Not off-leash, not for having their dog off-leash.
And it's coming to bite me.
If I've never dealt with them before. Right? Now, I can charge them with aggressive behavior, right, dog exhibiting threatening behavior towards a person.
But then is it just hearsay?
Absolutely it is.
So I physically have to have the dog to bite me so that you can take the bite mark so that...
But that's a whole nother charge.
Right. And it's aggressive dog.
No, that's now dog bites person causing minor or serious injury.
The aggressive dog is, is the launching of the dog towards you.
Right. And the one other thing that we have the ability to do, and I say that I collect evidence to prosecute, I also collect evidence and then I can submit that evidence to Jeff, and Jeff can designate a dog aggressive or dangerous. We'll see. But again, all that really does is it puts a bunch of stipulations on a specific person, and then if they don't meet those stipulations, I go issue them more tickets. So, going back to officer discretion, if I have that case occur, I would much rather be able to go, here's your four offense tickets. You're getting four charges for the, one for dog at large, one for failing to have a dog license, one for dog exhibiting threatening behavior towards a person. Because when it goes to court, the crown is going to go, hey, if you pay these two tickets, I'll draw this one. Or, you know, whatever. That might happen.
Right.
I'm not saying it will, that might happen. So, the more charges I can get, the better.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, you can see, Councilor, that this review of that bylaw is much needed in our community. So I would hope that we will consider the first reading and move on with first reading. So if any of you are willing to do so.
Councilor Brown, just, I want to be clear here, because I'm rethinking what I've said.
Okay.
If you said, if you had a complaint that a dog come running out onto the street and was exhibiting threatening behavior towards a person or towards you, for example?
Right.
Then yes, that is enough reasonable grounds and evidence to lay a charge. Whether or not the person is found guilty of that charge is another story, right? Because it's your evidence versus theirs.
Right, it's hearsay.
Right.
Right, without the bite marks.
Right. It's still reasonable grounds for me to lay the charge.
Right.
But whether or not you'd get a conviction. And that's what I always like to tell people, is I am the exact same witness as you have on the stand, except all my job is, is the middle man.
Right.
All I do is go there and go, yeah, this is, was this side of the story, this was this side, I had reasonable grounds, I laid the charge.
Thank you for that detailed information. Councilor Brown, do you want to go ahead and pursue first reading?
Yes, I would like to pursue first reading on bylaw 1679 Animal Bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions about the additions and the appendages?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to speak to one thing. I just noticed, and not to take everyone's focus, at the table of contents...
Any questions about the additions in the appendage?
Mayor? I'd like to speak to one thing, I just noticed, and not to take everyone's focus at the table of contents, when we adjusted some things without word, we'll simply fix that for second reading.
Right. First reading is just to go for the content and the intent of the bylaw. So seeing no question, all in favor? Thank you very much. So this bylaw will come back to us in about two weeks, and we will deal with the remainder of the readings at that point. All right, thank you so much, Office Officer Brad Larson, for what you do for our community, much appreciated.
No problem, thank you.
6B, bylaw 1675, is the...
Have we adopted the miniature from last meeting? I don't think we have.
No, we haven't.
Okay. You're right, I'm going a little fast, aren't I?
I moved to adopt the miniature on the January 22nd.
Thank you. Was there any questions? I read them, I didn't see any things that seemed blatantly wrong. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so the bylaw 1675, the 6B, off-site levies, we have Jeff there, maybe to talk to it a little bit, give us a sense how the community reacted, if there was any.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to speak to a couple of things. One is, for the purposes of moving this bylaw along, I'd appreciate if tonight you just did second reading. I think there may be a little bit of feedback still forthcoming, not much. Between Nolan and myself, and Shem as well, and those at the front desk, we did receive a number of inquiries about the bylaw, people curious about what's their specific implication, what should they expect, what does it mean for them. But by and large, we had no one who wished to come speak to it tonight. So that's a bit telling that people, the conversations I had, and I think no one would concur, people initially said, I need to understand this, and then said, okay, I'm not crazy about it, but I get it. You know, it's a cost, I'm not, I don't like it, but I get it. That, that was the bulk, I probably talked to maybe four different people, I think Nolan used to have the same, four or five, I know Shem, you talked to a couple. And it was mostly like, you know what, I don't like it, but I get it. Now, the one thing I will throw out there, and I thought this was very interesting, one of the people I talked to who would like to come to counsel, in fact, we're texting back and forth right now, but they're not in town, they brought up a point that, that they have a parcel of land that they are looking to sell to someone, and it is 20 acres. And the buyer is saying, am I going to have $100,000 levy on that, if I subdivide that? Because that's going to kill the deal, and I can buy the same amount of land just out of town. And do the same thing there, and I can be on town longer. So it brings up a couple of interesting things. One is the application of our bylaw. So let, let me give you an example of what I've been thinking about, and I, this has not been negotiated with anyone, so I feel fine talking about this publicly. I was thinking, if, if you were a property owner of 10 acres, five acres, 20 acres, and you were going to build one home on that, that piece for now, you know, the rest to come later, would it be reasonable within the bylaw that we simply charge the levy on, say, one acre versus the entire parcel? Because really, the purpose of the levy is to get money to increase infrastructure to accommodate density of development. This isn't causing density of development. It's one house on 20 acres, for example, it doesn't necessitate a storm or upon tomorrow. When there's 60 houses on that 20 acres, it does, it certainly does. So I've been kicking around, I know Nolan's been thinking about it too, how do we, how do we address that, where we say, if someone wants to subdivide five acres off right now, because you have future plans to develop, do you need to pay the $25,000 right now, even if you're not going to have a house on there? So we've been kicking around a couple of things like that. The second thing, and I'll throw this out very carefully, without any, I'll throw this out very carefully, is that the Act allows for intermunicipal levies. It allows for us to negotiate with our counterparts to say, those developments in the county are going to have an impact on us down the road, and we would request that you implement an intermunicipal levy. Now that's, could be difficult to negotiate, but you can see why. You can see why if we annex, or even if we don't annex, if over a certain time, all of Home Seekers Avenue gets sanitary sewer and it's on septic anymore, well, that's a whole bunch of homes now that we probably have to oversize downstream to accommodate. And so it might be reasonable that there's a levy for that, because it's not on their site, it'll happen at the lift station, for example. So that's just another thing I've been kicking around, that I don't want to stall this indefinitely, but I think we need to have a little bit of discussion. There's been some good feedback, but what I will, again, summarize is, everyone we've talked to seems to be understanding of the, of the reason why we're putting it in place. No one felt strongly enough about it to come speak to you tonight, or even write a letter.
So none were offended by the, the total cost per acre, which was a little over $5,000?
I, I didn't hit that.
The only ones that, that were a little uptight were the ones that had a large parcel that wanted to put one house.
Right.
And they were saying, I don't want to pay the $50,000, when I'm only doing one house, I want to somehow build. And the only way to really do it with this bylaw would be to subdivide off a small piece, have a house on it, and pay it on that, and leave the levy on the rest. But then that means they've got to do a subdivision that's...
The cost.
Costs. $10,000.
Yeah, and it's to the, yeah. Okay, Counsel Ben-Gre, Counsel Brown.
Jeff, we're going to be looking at a motion that I made, motion 2019-43, in the off-site levies, and it will be corrected at that time. Could that not apply to all individuals?
Just let me, let's take a step back on my account, so you're referring to the Schaefer Development Act concession piece?
Yes.
So a different monster.
Is it the same thing?
Yeah, you got a different monster there. I think you should deal with those completely, separate each other.
So I've been doing some thinking about this as well. And I, I think the intent of the off-site levy is to ensure that when development happens, that they pay their fair share. And I don't think that they need to be hit with a, you know, a big levy right off the back if somebody buys 15 or 20 acres for future development. I, I understand that that would happen. If we were the city of Calgary, I'd say, we've got no problem here. Because the city of Calgary is vibrant, and people are buying, developers are buying that land, they're developing it, and they're subdividing right now. But we don't have that situation here. Our, our community is very slow right now, required in development, and I think it's really important for us to encourage people that want future development to be able to buy those pieces without having to be penalized right off the bat, because 50,000 bucks, or whatever it is, it's a, it's a big hit, when you know that maybe you're not going to do nothing for 10 or 15 years with that property. So I, I really think that each, as, as a piece of parcel is subdivided, and there's a development permit, put forth, then the levy has to apply there at that point in time. That's my opinion.
Okay, so help me understand exactly. We have one house on 20 acres, there are two models. Or we ask the developer to subdivide that portion where that house will be, and that's where the levy is, or we leave it open, and in a development agreement, whatever that is, there would be a clause included that said, the minute there are more development, further levy will have to come? Are those the two models we could be considering?
You okay?
The bylaw already covers that, because it says that we can either charge the levy at time of subdivision...
Right, or development.
...or at that time of development. So what, what one of the line owners is doing now, he's right in the middle of, getting his subdivision done, he will build one house on one lot, he will pay the levy there, and it will be tied to the rest of the lots, and he will, when they get a development permit for that lot, he sells it, they get a development permit, they will then pay the levy.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
So, but here, what we are considering in the scenario you've proposed, is that someone right now is holding that whole parcel of land, wants to sell it to someone who has the intent to only put one house.
So for example, let me pick, I'll, now, see, I'll pick Don Hall, he has 10 acres by the elementary, for no reason, then it's a good round number. So if I went to Don and said, Don, I want to buy nine of your 10 acres, because I'm going to build my house on it for now, and then I'm going to maybe do something 10 years down the road, I'm going to do a development or something. So right now, what would happen is, one, I need to go subdivide nine of the 10 acres off, but I also want a development agreement for my house. But unless I do simply two subdivisions, so I'd have to subdivide the nine, then subdivide off my one point, whatever.
You could do it at the same time, and once I'm done, you can get two lots out of it.
There's just some cost, right?
There's just another $500 to do an extra.
So $500, that's what...
So that, that's something after this came back, and the feedback, we've been thinking about, we're worried, we don't want to penalize someone saying, hey, down the road, I'd like to do this, but I'm not going to front the $100,000. Because the intent of the bylaw is to accommodate dense development, and that isn't causing it. So we're just trying to figure out, we don't have, it does, it does acknowledge that, either development or subdivision, but I'm not satisfied that the wording is strong enough to make that clear. So we'd like to work on that a little more, if that's, council kind of agrees, we should look at something like that.
Nolan, and then let's try to see how we feel.
The other advantages of the person that says has 20 acres, and he's going to own some MR, he's going to own some stuff like that, he knows, he might know where the MR is already, because he might have a plan there already. So he can subdivide off one lot that was a little bigger than one lot could be in the far future, and pay the levy on that, give up the MR, give up the roads, and then when he goes to do it again, he now has less land to pay the levy on. We end up getting less that way lots of times.
Right, because we pulled out all the MR.
Because we pulled out all the MR, we pulled out all the roads, we now have only seven acres to charge on. So in some ways, it's an advantage to them, it's not as good for us, but...
Okay.
Things like that happen.
We also get the MR and the roads, like they're giving up that land.
Yeah.
It's not free for them either to give up MR and roads.
So I, I now understand the different scenarios. So essentially, what we have to decide as counsel is, are we willing to accept the reduction of the levy if there is only one house put on a parcel of land in order to promote development in our town? So Counsel Brown, I hear that you would support that. Counsel...
Yeah, I think so too.
Drew, so, I see that Counsel Cole and...
Could I get a resolution to direct administration to, to amend the bylaw prior to second reading to accommodate large parcel sales? Let's put it that way.
All right, Counsel Ben-Gre, do you want to do that? Is that what you meant?
I directed to administration to amend the bylaw before second reading to include large, large parcels and the off-site levies.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll work on some stronger wording to make sure it's very clear, so it's not scary to those looking to invest in large parcels. So it's not prohibitive, it chases them out of town, really is my big concern.
Okay, hold on a second. Here's the wording said before, considering...
So you don't need to do second reading tonight, it's fine.
So we're going to do those readings next time, you bring the amended.
Sure.
I like that, thank you.
That's just fine.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Counsel. So we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Thank you very much. So this will be amended and brought back to counsel in a couple of weeks.
That's it, thanks, hon.
Jeff, for the next one, maybe you want to take time to explain to counsel exactly what the advantage for the growing bylaw, the two scenarios. So this is bylaw 1680, growing bylaw Gulf Coast. As you are well aware, we need to start to incur capital expenditures, and capital expenditures costs a lot of money, and you cannot do it without having some money ahead of yourself. So therefore, administration is looking at a way to finance that capital purchases, which has to be done pretty soon. And two scenarios were brought to the forefront, one better than the other, we think.
Yeah, so Hocken and I were discussing, and he made a really good comment about when you look at debt instruments or ways to take on debt, sometimes it's more important if the debt instrument works better for you than worrying about a half a percent or a percent in interest. So we looked at the Alberta Capital Finance Authority to take on, in the budget, by the way, you have $300,000 in debt revenue to fund $300,000 in capital purchases. So we looked at Alberta Capital Finance, and we can get about a 3% interest rate, a little under that for five years, but it's very rigid. So it's very, very rigid, where you can't prepay, it's very set, and your numbers have to be, this is exactly what we, our borrowing bylaw was, this is exactly depending what we'll get, which, there's a place for that, especially on large borrowings, very much so. And then we looked at, I went and met with James Henline over at First Choice, where we bank, and I said, tell me what a revolving line of credit would cost, which the answer is prime rate, is what they'll lend to the town for, is just straight prime. Which right now is 3.95, I believe. And so we were talking about the benefit to that. One is that if we have a year, let's say, two years from now, we're, and you might remember this from last year, we had some operational surplus. And I came to council and said, hey, council, what do we want to do with this? We can put it in reserves for this purpose, we can do something here. It gives us some flexibility to say, hey, we had $10,000 of the golf course surplus this year, why don't we put that against debt? As an example. The other thing that it does is, when you look at the MGA, you must, you, you cannot just informally take on debt. So we need to do a borrowing bylaw, which is what you have, and if it's under five years, and the intent of the borrowing is to be less, five years or less, you don't need to advertise the bylaw. Now, I'm not looking to skirt advertising, but I'll tell you what I am looking to skirt, is if we get to budget 2020, and we say, you know what, we should probably get another $35,000 more, and then in 2021, we might need another five carts. I'm not looking to advertise and do a borrowing bylaw every time we want that next piece of equipment, but so, so what I wrote in the rules of the bylaw is, that it can be used only for capital, and it can only be used for items in an approved budget, and only for items that will be repaid within a five-year term. So what we would do is, we turn around and take the principal and interest and put it in your operating budget, advertised over five years. That's just simply how we deal with that. So you approve as a council, X amount of dollars to pay against that debt, so that it's always paid off in five years. The other thing I did, and this started a bit of a domino of policy discussion, is, by the way, lines of credit are a little bit gray area in the MGA. They're not really well considered. And municipal affairs is, I don't want to say unsure of how to deal with them, but it's not as cut and dry as I want a $2 million 20-year mortgage. Those are very cut and dry, very easy to deal with. So what I did is I prepared a bylaw which says, okay, here's the rules for it, but this bylaw, and therefore the line of credit, will expire in five years. That makes sure that you guys are not extending as a council unadvertised borrowing over five years. Now, I hope some of you are thinking, but if we borrow out of it in year three, we still got two years to pay when it expires. Absolutely true. So what I'd like to do is, as part of our budget process and timeline policy, I would like to, every December, I want to bring council all debt bylaws for a year. So council, we have this bylaw for the outfall borrowing, council, we have this bylaw for the line of credit, council, we have this bylaw for this NMAX debt, for example. And here's where their balances are. And in five years, the council of the day can simply decide as part of budget, we're either going to pay it out and close it, or we're going to do another bylaw for five years. And that's how we can deal with it. So we're always within that five-year piece, and the council of the day has that discretion. So they can say, hey, there's only 20,000 or 30,000 left in it, we don't have any capital needs, or we have some reserves we can use, so we're just going to close it in five, we're going to pay it out this year and close it. That's their discretion, some of your discretion at the time that will be. Or they can say, yeah, let's actually do another five-year bylaw, this is working for us, we want to continue to do this. So I put an expiry on it, and municipal affairs really likes this bylaw, they think this is a great way to do revolving lines of credit. So my recommendation is that we do a revolving line of credit at the First Choice Credit Union for $300,000 for the purposes of financing only capital at the golf course. This isn't a way to, to offset operational deficit or anything like that, that's not what this is intended for, but the rules are within the bylaw. So my recommendation is for first reading on that tonight, and then we'll bring it back in two weeks.
All right. Counselors, you know that the $300,000 expenditure is already in a budget, we approved that. So in other words, what we need to do is create the terms under which we borrow in that money. And that is, to the credit of Jeff, a very good bylaw, I felt. When I read it, I thought, wow, that's a brainchild of Jeff, and probably going to be in the future, something that municipal affairs will recommend to different municipalities when they're going to... when they're going to try to borrow money on their line of credit revolving.
First of all, thank you. Second of all, I forgot to mention, item five, don't anyone get scared by the 8%? Basically, what I did there is, I don't know what interest rates are going to do over the next five years.
Yeah, we don't know.
But if we ever hit that amount, then we need to revisit this bylaw and decide how we want to finance. But I just kind of put this threshold where we were comfortable.
Yeah.
So at prime rate, and I cannot imagine prime rates 8% in five years, I think we'd have other major wrecks on our hands as a society if that was the case, but that's simply just a threshold to bring the bylaw back to council.
So are there questions regarding that? The $300,000, as I say, we approved that spending, is in the budget, we know that, is the terms, the banking aspect, we needed to deal with.
Questions, mate?
Councillor Brown.
With this, we only pay on what we use.
Exactly.
Rather than a fixed term. And I like, because I've used line of credits myself for years, and they're wonderful, if you're judicious with them, and you don't overstep it, you know, they're great, and for that reason, I'm with you on this.
Well, the whole idea is, when you have all your tax coming in, of course, you're not going to have to pay interest on that, there will be money in the bank. But as it fluctuates, we will know that at times, it will cost us interest.
And the thing is, is if, once you have purchased something, you're going to be paying on it anyways, every year. And soon as you've paid that portion off, then there's no interest until you buy something else.
Exactly.
And it's perfect, it really works well.
So that's a whole intent, councillor.
Yeah, I like it.
You nailed it. Okay.
Do you like it enough to move forward?
I would move, I would move that, unless you want to do that?
Councillor Drew had to stand up, so go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to have first reading on draft bylaw 1680, borrowing bylaw.
Of course.
Of course, yes, sorry.
I don't think there are further questions. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Great, good one.
Yes. Now, bylaw 1678 has to do with a taxi bylaw. We already have done first reading, we didn't get any input from the community, therefore we are comfortable in pushing forward second and third reading. Councillor Cole, do you have a question?
No, I would like to move forward on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept bylaw, second reading for bylaw 1678, the taxi bylaw.
Okay. No questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. So now councillor Brown, you want to do third reading?
I really like to.
You need to.
No, we don't need to allow, we already done first.
I would like to make the motion for second, third reading, sorry, third reading of bylaw 1678, taxi bylaw.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. I think that will come into effect as of.
Right now, it just happened.
Right now, the minute, the minute assigned, okay, thank you. All right, so that's good. Under six E, draft council protocol, all what we need here is a resolution to approve that protocol. So it's not a bylaw, it's a protocol, so one will solve what it requires. Questions about that protocol? I think it, the protocol is there to show the intent of what councillors are to do, how to behave, and it is not about guideline, that's what it is in fact.
And it is a living document.
It's a living document.
I'll make the resolution.
Go ahead.
Draft council protocol, I make a resolution that we.
Adopt it.
Adopt the council protocol in the role of council.
That's given, thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
So that means we can't jump across the table like they do in Japan and have fisticuffs with the council. You want that?
Not, it mentioned that we ought to be respectful.
Your code of conduct already covered that.
So we shall, we shall abide by it if you don't mind. I don't have enough big enough to stop that cat up a bit. Okay, under six F, draft bylaw 1652C, this is a council procedural bylaw amendment, and it has to do with the amendment that is highlighted in your packet, if I remember properly.
I'll look over that highlight, let me find it.
I think, I thought I saw a highlight. Maybe not.
Maybe you can refer to it, and then we can read it, and I looked high low for it, and I couldn't find it.
Jeff, can you direct us to the amendment?
One second here. I'm trying to remember, it was section 22, I believe, let me get there. It had to do simply with what you've already done, is your approval of additions to the agenda.
Yeah, it just has to do, it just has to do that with the idea that if we have to add something to the agenda, as we did today, we need 100%.
I'm going to read it for you.
Yeah, please.
It says, when one member feels.
What number is it in here?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Okay, so that's what it is, go ahead, please.
It says, when one member.
It just.
Part four, twenty-two.
It has to do with having 100% approval before we can move along.
No, that's not the one, eh?
It mentions the two-thirds of the E numbers.
Oh yeah, so it's 25B, sorry councillor. Oh no, hold on.
Yeah, that's two-thirds.
Jim, this doesn't have the.
Okay, it doesn't have the changes, that's a problem.
Yeah.
So we won't pass it.
So the changes are not there.
We'll have to pass it the next time around.
Oh, 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 yeah, sorry, can I, okay, thank you. Yes, now I remember our conversation. So when we do an amendment, we do it as a separate document to the whole bylaw, so.
Yeah, so the amendment, where is it going to be from?
Beginning or at the end here, let's see.
Amendment's right under the RFD.
Okay, so it's the second page on this file. Yeah, sorry, that's right.
What number is it?
So you have the RFD, and then you have this one-page council procedural bylaw amendment. So this will sit behind the whole bylaw.
Okay.
And it says that part five, section 25A of the bylaw, be amended to read, add new items to the agenda by unanimous.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, my mistake too, so what you're actually.
So the B didn't even matter.
No, I missed it, I missed it.
The second page on the whole file, councillor.
It's bylaw 1652C, council procedural bylaw amendment.
Yeah, so go right to the beginning of the file, and it's right after the RFD.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, we just were.
Yeah.
I just missed it. I couldn't remember what it was. I remembered the essence of the conversation, but couldn't find it.
You're approving 1652C, not the parent bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct. So it just has to do with procedural rules, changes, councillor Brown?
So I make a motion to receive the first reading of the bylaw, council procedure bylaw amendment, bylaw 1652C.
Okay. So questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. So this one, we can do second, allow for third, and third.
I move second reading of bylaw 1652C, council procedural bylaw amendment.
Thank you, question? All in favor? Thank you very much. Now I need someone to allow.
I'll make a motion to allow third read for bylaw 1652C, council procedure bylaw amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. One more bylaw, one more. I need third. Councillor Benjy?
I'll make a motion to approve third reading of draft, or bylaw 1652C, council procedure bylaw.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. So under six G, draft bylaw 1600A, noise bylaw amendment. So we will only pass the first reading on this one.
I couldn't read all three.
Because it allows for people, it affects people, therefore we give them time to decide if that is to their liking or not. Councillor Drew?
Yeah.
No, councillor Drew?
I'd just like to make, like to make a motion to have first reading on bylaw 1600A, noise bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. Councillor Benjy, you have a good question, why don't we do the three reading? If you, I'm going to explain to you why, and that is a very good way to deal with bylaw. If the bylaw has to do strictly with us, so the procedural bylaw, and that do not affect the citizens at large in our community, you are allowed to do first, second, allow for third, and third. If the bylaw that you're passing will affect citizens, you can do first and second, but you must stop and give time to the citizen to come and speak to that bylaw. So in general, it's best to stop at first and do second and third, because if at first you have a whole bunch of citizens that are dissatisfied with the bylaw, then I can come to council and speak to it. That's the way it is according to the MGA. Let's follow the MGA and be happy with that.
However, mayor, we had a request to change that due to the cleaning of sidewalks and the safety of the participants on those commercial and so forth assets, so we have to look at the liability of that too.
Well, right now, that will carry on doing business the way that do it, and honestly, they're doing it in the morning. Right now, what we're going to give them is a legal framework, but let's follow the MGA. We are safer in doing that, and to start to go one time approving and one time not, it's not the best way to do it. Like I said, you can pass second if you want, but I wouldn't go any further than that.
Have we had a lot of complaints about very morning slower removals?
No. This is why I say we're not in a hurry. All right, so are we satisfied there? Did we vote on it?
Yes, first reading.
So we're going to leave it alone. In two weeks' time, we shall do the rest. Six H, policy F20 dash six fees and charges policy. We only need one motion to consider the approval of the policy.
I would make that motion, since it only has one change on it, so policy F20 dash six, fees and charge policy, make a recommendation that we accept that.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so here we conclude the bylaw and policy. Thank you so much for your work, council. It's moving along pretty good. I understand that at one point or another, Jill is coming with some food, so we will stop. Let's go on to seven, other business. Here is a letter to Minister Billis. If you look in your packet, there are a few changes that have been made, they are already made, Jim. Okay, there are a few tweaking that happened to that letter. Councillor Selk initiated the process, it has gone through many hands and many heads, and this is actually the letter that will be sent, is maybe as not as aggressive as councillor Selk will, would have loved to have it, but it speaks to the need of starting to revisit the notions spoken of regarding economic development in our area and ways to do so. So if you are in agreement, I need someone to approve that letter. Councillor Brown?
I'd make a motion to approve the letter.
Thank you, to be sent to Minister Billis. There are quite a few CCs that will need to be added to that letter, and councillor Selk may speak with you regarding those CC, if you don't mind. Thank you. Seven B is a letter to Mr. Whistlehead, the former chief of the Kanai Blood Tribe Reserve, and it's a great honor for him to have been called as chancellor of the UAL, and we felt it important to send a letter to recognize that. The address is missing, as you can see, but if you could approve it in principle, it would be great.
I have a concern with the letter. I don't like the term best of luck, because it's not luck. He worked hard, so I'd like to change that, best wishes in your endeavor.
Okay, that should have been changed, but Jeff did not.
Whenever I see best of luck, I'm thinking, no.
You know something?
Of course you.
Did he not change, send you the changes to that letter? Oh, he didn't send them. Okay, can you make a note of this one, because we had.
Otherwise, I would like to move to approve the letter with changes, as suggested.
Yeah, I spoke to the same thing, so thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we need to move on. So the motion correction, seven C, so you can see, we need to rescind, and we need to reword. Councillor.
Because of my motion, and I need clarification, I will rescind motion 2019-39, and I will.
Okay, I think, let's rescind it first, and then we will reword it. Okay, so, all in favor? Thank you very much. Now do the proper motion with the proper wording.
Okay, motion 2019-39, and to make the following motion, that the municipal portion of the property taxes on the property described as Plan 9110755, Block 15, be calculated at the assessed value prior to subdivision until time of sale of each lot to a third party or upon application of a development permit. Other portions of the property taxes will be taxed as per the assessed value as established from time to time.
Okay, I think we got it right this time.
Yes.
A word, Jill had, was not pleased with our wording, so we made sure that it was corrected. So, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, the next, the next item, who is going to speak to it? Councillor Brown, are you going to speak to this one, or are you going to jointly speak also?
Yes, sure.
Okay. All right, this one has to do with a possibility of having a consultant start the proceeding, looking into the park and rec project that we have initiated.
Correct. So councillor Selk brought us the name of the factor five group that they have used with.
It's just a recommendation from South Grove.
South Grove.
This is a consulting group that they've, on.
And so they came to the Parks and Rec Ad-Hoc Committee, and they presented, they did their pitch, and we felt like it was a very reasonable pitch for 11,800 plus GST. They give us an environmental scan, document review, survey development, communication materials, workshop facilitation, compiling and analyzing findings, strategic lens development, strategic action plan, and finalization. The moral of the story is, it gives us an idea of what this community wants and needs are as far as a rec center goes.
Okay.
And it's going to also give us the ability to, with all the information that they're giving us, to then apply for grants. And when we talked to them in regards to applying for grants, and what was reasonable, they came back and said that, like, if we were to throw out a number of, let's say, a $6 million facility, he said. six million dollar facility, he said, after finding all of this information, it would be reasonable to assume that we could get fifty percent of that six million dollars, so three million dollars, back in grants because of the footwork that they've done. And they would then, in hand, handle that as well.
Can I ask you a question regarding the model?
You bet.
Including in that model, you have the capital aspect. Is your operational aspect going to be tied in with it or not?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I need to clarify your question, Mayor. Are you asking, have we looked at the overall costs plus the operational?
Right.
Ongoing costs?
Yeah.
We haven't discussed the operational ongoing costs. However, we have a meeting tomorrow night where that will be coming up.
Okay, all right, because I really think for council to be able to make a decision of any sort, whatever it is, you need to have the complete full picture. I know it's, it's subject to, to, et cetera, but a ballpark is not a bad figure, because it impacts a taxpayer, right?
Of course. We also, sitting at the table on our ad hoc committee, as you know, we have Counselor Kevin Quentin, who is with the county, and we requested that he go to his council and try and get some money to put towards this. And he returned and reported today from their meeting that he was able to get two thousand dollars from the county to go towards this.
Towards the.
Consulting piece.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so essentially, what we are looking at then is nine thousand dollars to be a request in order for that consultant to start doing that work. Have we reserved some money towards that in a budget, Jeff?
I thought it was like fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so a lot of us pulling it up here, so I catch up.
That's what we need to know, then we know what kind of motion to make.
So in your account, two six two three three four.
Two six, two six three four.
Two six two three three four, we have a council priorities line, with that fifteen thousand allocated to it.
Okay, all right, so that nine thousand, that, or whatever, could come out of that which was earmarked for that purpose.
Yeah, I think in the motion, just to say something, to use X dollars of the council priorities for this purpose, because you've already approved it in budget.
Right.
You're not creating new expense here.
All right, so I would say, in order to be safe, because we don't know when the money of the county will come, and if, whatever, whatever, if we make the motion with up to the full amount, and if it's less, so much better.
I just ask a question.
Go ahead.
With this consulting firm, they said that if, if they do this work for us, there's a possibility of three million dollars, let's say it's six million dollars. Is that, do they have a proven track record with that, or is that just something that they're pitching to us, saying, you know, here, if you go with us.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I just kind of wondered what they're.
So according to them, when we asked that very question, because one of the other members asked that as we were sitting at the table, they do have a proven track record, which is why they felt confident in saying fifty percent.
Yeah, but like I say, capital is one aspect, operational is another.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just have a question on the tale of Carson's share. Fifty-two hours in kindness, a week and a half, do we have somebody in the staff, in the office that doesn't need to set all this up, or how does that work?
Good question.
Yeah, when Jill and I actually originally met with Eric Burton, and it was, we just told him, look, we'll get it covered off. If you need data here, if you need information there, if you need advertising of a community engagement event, we'll take care of all that. So that's what a lot of that is.
So fifty-two hours is kind of a guess, then, what we might need to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Counselor Bandy?
So if we approve this factor five to do this, where does it go from here?
It is, right now, it's a way to obtain facts, and in order to get the sense of the breadth of the financial cost, and with the additional operational, we will have a picture that starts to give us a sense what the impact on the taxpayer will be. The taxpayer will be consulted, you can be sure of that, is to grade the magnitude of a project without having consultation, serious consultation, to be able to have an approval of it, yes.
And I think that if we're spending twelve thousand dollars, and they come back to us and say it's going to be eighty million bucks, then at least we've already spent a lot of thousands of dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars.
And we kind of know where we can go with that, and I think I'd rather invest the money than that and then go from there.
Well, very often, you know, same thing as engineering for a large project, right? There's a cost upfront, unfortunately, and you cannot get away from those costs.
This council asked the ad hoc committee, asked Parks and Rec, to ask the ad hoc committee to get the ball rolling. So essentially, this is the ball rolling. Our goal is to have a reputable firm represent us, and that's what we all agreed to, so that's what we're trying to progress with. This is, it just happens to have a price tag, dang it. We did ask for free, it didn't happen, so this is, this is where we're at.
But we knew there was coming with a price when we put our priorities.
Absolutely.
So Counselor Brown?
I think it's good money. We all spent to find out if it's going to cost us six million or twelve million, right? And this way, we'll have some facts and figures to be able to show the public, and definitely, I'm sure, I'd be very surprised if we don't tell the House to have something like this.
I would have so.
I would, too. And if we have these answers, then we're much more prepared to move forward than if we don't have those answers, because the questions are going to be asked.
Right. Counselor Selk, are you ready to put the motion forward? You have been way too silent all night, right?
I thought everybody wanted it, though.
Poor me, huh?
Sure. We allocate funds from line item GL two dash sixty-two dash three three four, council priorities, up to the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars plus GST.
Thank you for the questions. Okay, I will follow the vote. All in favor? Thank you. All right.
It's not poor me.
What's that?
No, it's not poor me.
All right, Counselor.
No, it's not serious either, just a tease.
Are we carrying on? Are we good?
We're carrying on.
Seven E, campground expansion. Counselor Drew, you asked for this item to be put back on the, on the table. How do we?
We just discussed this last Tuesday, and just looking at the plan and looking to the future, I felt like it was something that I wanted to bring forward as far as the golf course is concerned, building that piece, economic development, I felt like this was something that we need, I believe, we need to go ahead with, and we need to do it now, and we need to get it out to tender, whatever we need to do. It's a project that will pay for itself over time. It's a good investment, and I think it would really help kind of position us as a pivotal place that people can go to, many glaciers, Waterton, they can, yeah, we can become a hub of keeping people in town, but also if people want to go elsewhere, they have kind of a home base, and Cardston's their home base in a, in a sense, so that's all.
All right. Counselor Brown?
Well, and I really feel like we have a window right now, because of the, what happened in Waterton, and because of their campground situation and what they've got going on there, I feel like we have this amazing window in which, if we build it, they will come, so to speak. If we have the right infrastructure set up at the campground, then we will have, and we'll be able to pay it back very quickly because of the people that are coming. They're already, the campground owner, or the campground family that runs it is already saying they need this, they really need this in order to fill it.
All right, can I ask Jeff, can I ask Jeff something? My concern regarding the extension, it's not the expansion itself, it's a timeframe.
Yeah.
Because if I am a camper, long before, I'm looking for peace and quiet. I'm not looking for machinery, drive me insane, and out of that campground in a hurry. So how do we mitigate that, those factors? Create growth, expansion, and yet offer appropriate creation?
And do it cleanly and quietly, huh?
Right, exactly. How much better you want it?
Sure. So let me, let me give a little of an update since the CCW meeting. So we had this discussion, I guess, just a week ago, and I spoke with Brandon after that meeting, and I said, Brandon, what do you see as the process here? What do you see we should do? And he said, well, first of all, we've got to design it. We haven't done utility design, we haven't done any of that yet. We just did some sketches on the ground. So he's got to do all the sewer water design, Leonard has to do a power design, because we don't have capacity to extend it from what we're using, we got to come in with a new connection from another direction. So there's some design work that needs to be done. The other thing we're juggling is, is two big things. One is, we're going to be tearing up Seventh Avenue between Main Street and the campground this year, and so the guys would actually, they're going to try and start on that even if they can, weather depending, as early in the spring as we can, before we hit the May long weekend. So if we can get that dug up, tore up and out, because that will affect the campground. Yes, you can get to it other ways, but let's be honest, if your RV's headed down Main Street, you're probably not flipping UE and trying to figure out how to get down there by going down ninth through some residential over the campground. You're just not. So we're trying to get that done very early to not impact the campground when it opens. The other piece is, is we intend to do further work on the creek, and the window for that is the end of August. Now, we don't, we're not crazy about that window, because the campground's busy, but it's the only window DFO, Department of Fisheries and Oceans, gives you to work in the creek. We don't have discretion over that window. And so we have a really crunch time in August to have a bunch of work done with the creek. So those are things we're considering as far as where do we put this in the mix? Because again, we don't want to have a campground fully torn up with machinery going through June, July, and we have other streets to do. And so we have a couple options. One is we can contract it out, there's just a cost associated with that, that's the one thing. And two is, again, we're not even designed, so we've got a little work to do there. So what Brandon was proposing, and maybe this doesn't fit the timeframe that you are all considering, but what he was proposing is, if he gets the utility all designed, we could put in all the utility potentially at the very tail end of the season, hopefully in October. We could have all the underground utility done, dug up, and then spring of 2020, before we open, we could have all the pads, landscaping, trees, fire pits, all the gravel, road, all of that built in the spring before we open. He's just concerned about being in there with machinery all summer, because we did get a lot of negative feedback in the creek work that we did two years ago.
Yeah, that was not good.
The campers weren't pleased with the dust. There was dust and there was noise.
And the piles of stones and all that stuff, that was not very pretty.
So we're a little cognizant of that, but that's when I talked to Brandon, he's just feeling with the work the guys are doing in the other roads and streets, that may fit, that if we have a decent October, it doesn't freeze up real hard, we could maybe get all the underground done in October. So I throw that out as something we discussed after CCW.
I just have a quick question. The last meeting that we had at CCW, you talked about contracting out, and kind of the window was like a six to eight weeks. If we did that closer to the spring, would that, you know, I mean, I don't want to put it, I know that.
Sure.
Public Works is doing a lot of stuff, but if they don't have to do this, and we have it tendered out, I don't have, personally, I don't have a problem paying someone to come in and do it, and do it quickly and get it done, so that we can start reaping the benefits of, of the, that's just something that I.
Is that something that council would be willing for us to, as administration, to consider?
I'm looking at the Waterton model, they, B side's totally torn up right now, but they waited till camping season was over, maybe by the first of July, first of August, they will be able to use B side again, so I don't see a problem with them doing a lot of the groundwork in October, getting the rest of it done in the spring, just not, I think that would work, but if you want to expedite it, you might have to contract it out, too, I don't know.
Exactly.
So two things with contracting, we'd have to consider, one is if we could, so we're mid-February, okay, so you'd have a tender process till mid-March, and then you would hope you have availability right now.
Yeah.
So that's the only thing, and the other thing is, this isn't in budget, so we'd have to figure out how we're funding it. Because that's not currently, that's not yet determined. I don't have a funding source for, so what are we thinking about? Two twenty-five if we did it internally, and then again, until we put out to tender, I don't know where that number, I'll take a wild stab at three.
Yeah.
You know, something like that if we contracted it, but I'm totally guessing. So we'd have to look at a funding piece for it, and don't correlate our new line of credit at three hundred thousand with this.
I wasn't thinking that.
I know you were, it just happened to be the same number. So those are just some challenges of putting a project together, getting it up to bid, hoping you have availability right away, and weather, and then you hope you got good weather for it, that's it.
Yeah, and that's always a iffy. Counselor Bandy?
Counsel, I've struggled with, with all this stuff all weekend long, late at nights. When we invited Mr. Brooks to come and do a proposal for years back, I was called a meat and potatoes man. The reason for that is, I look into the long-term situation of these things. Now, we just, we just ordered a study for a parks and recreation facility or recreation facility. We're looking at a big time investment. Now, we got a campground expansion, which we can legitimately have return on investment. It might take some time, but there's a return on investment to consider. Then, we're looking at also, and I know we're going to hit for it, is a new golf clubhouse. The old clubhouse was, was reestablished, it was relocated from Delbonita in nineteen seventy. It's, it's had its run. How much can we afford as a council to do all of these programs, even, even the leg work that's involved? Can we do it? And that's my concern, and I love the campground expansion, because it will assist our golf course, it will assist our businesses downtown, you know, everything about the campground is exciting to me.
All right, so to maybe answer partially to your question, when we did our strategic plan, we set out the priorities of council, all those items that you mentioned right now are the priority of council for the next priorities. So therefore, we are only pursuing the intent of this council in our priorities. So it's not so much that there is not a cost associated to it, that there is not a problem with funding all those things. All those are true and need to be considered in time. But there is also the need to move forward with some of the project. The thing is always the proper timing, the proper window, and making sure that we're not overextending ourselves when we do not have the money approved in the budget. That is where the caution has to happen, because if you change the priority regarding the funding of this project, which at this time might be more next year than this year, with a start this year, finish next year, before the camping season, at that point, we would have the money, because we would budget for it. Right now, we don't, which means that there are other capital projects that would have to be put on hold in order to fund this one. So that might be a chunk of road, that might be a chunk of sewer, that might be a chunk of water line. So that's what it is, and so that is what we have to do, because the money is not expendable. What we have in a budget is what there is, there is no more. There are savings somewhere, we know that.
So from your, from your.
So from your evaluation of this, you're suggesting that we put off the expansion of a water treatment plant or a sewer treatment plant, because the county wants to hook up to our system, we have to upgrade it and stuff like that?
I'm not saying that, Counselor, not at all.
Well, we have to realize that there's going to be some problems here and issues with infrastructure and stuff.
What I'm simply saying is that in a capital infrastructure budget, there is so many thousands of $10,000, $100,000 that have been allocated that we all approved, and that has been sent to the ministry. What we can do, and what is within our possibilities to do, is reallocate the money to different projects. So there's a little bit of flexibility within that capital budget.
This project also has good benefits for economic development. I don't know, they charge about $30 a night, but that's going to be about $35,000 to $45,000 a year on this project, and so that pays it off very quickly, and then after that, it's money in the bank. Some of our other projects, we don't see that money coming back.
You've got legitimacy, because you've got a return on your investments.
That's right. What you need to then ask yourself, right now, the project in-house would be $225,000. If it is sent to a bid, it might be definitely more, we know it will be, but what we don't have the guarantee is that I can finish the work in time for this season to start, because the weather might not be cooperating, so we might end up by finding ourselves having paid a lot of money for something that cannot be completed this year.
I don't think it can get done this year. No, I agree with you.
So Counselor Court, your feeling is the timeline...
I would like to see the groundwork done in October, like he suggested, and finish it the following year. I think that's more logical than to try and run it through the next three or four months. I don't think it's going to happen.
All right. Ask yourself, what's your feeling about this one?
Road improvements, whatever.
No, Counselor, whatever doesn't, you're not elected to for whatever.
I gave you my opinion. It doesn't matter to me, one way or the other, fall, go into spring, do it in three months.
Counselor Brown?
I think if it's going to be more efficiently done in the fall, I think that's probably the way to go.
Good. Counselor Banbury?
I agree with Counselor Court that this has to be done, you know.
I just can't see the timeframe fitting it in in that short of time.
And not disrupting our present...
Jeff?
Given the feedback, let me bounce this off you, see if we're okay. We'll do a, like, a formal design in the utility, because we haven't done that yet, we'll just put lines on paper. So we'll do a formal design in the utility, electrical, sewer, water, cable, because we'll all add in there. And then we will do, we'll put a cost to that for 2019. And then when we do mill rate budget, I'll bring that back to see if it can be accommodated. You'll have to make a decision at that time whether the answer is yes or no on that, but I'll bring it back at the mill rate budget to see if you can accommodate it this year. I also need to meet with Barton and Brandon again, just to make sure that if this is approved in budget, we're good to do it in October. Now, maybe some weather permitting, but I think we'll be fine. I think it should only take them a couple of weeks, should be relatively quick, we're not going through curbs and gutters and sidewalks and asphalt, it's just an open field right now, so.
Okay.
Jeff, would it be too much to ask you if you could give us a basic return on investment if we had to borrow, you know?
Right. Yes, it's, so no, it's not too much to ask, yes, I can do it. You requested that at the CCW, so I intend to still bring that back to get that to council.
I also think that you had some guesstimates that were very low.
Yes.
And so I think, yeah, we kind of have an idea.
It won't take long to put that together. I just need Brandon to really solidify the numbers, because again, that was estimates too, but once we know the exact footage of everything and all that stuff, then we can give a really close number. And maybe it does, to fit in the budget, maybe it is a short-term borrowing, I don't know, but we need to look at the business case on that first.
Thank you. And I'm not opposed to a campground.
All right, okay, so does it satisfy you, Counselor? Yeah, thank you. All right, so I see that Jeff has completed that portion of the work.
Did we give a motion on that?
I just...
We don't need a, we don't need a motion. We have Jill that is there with some food. Would you like to break at this point?
Yes, sure.
Sure. Okay.
I'll make that motion, we'll take a 15-minute break.
Thank you. All in favor? And Jill, thank you very much. Okay. Counselor Brown, do you want to put a page to...
Sure.